Good morning, everybody. It is nine nine AM on June seventeenth. Time to start our regular meeting. Alright, at this time, we'll have, we'll stand, uh, we'll ask, ask the pastor to lead us in prayer, if you could, sir.
Amen.
And we'll ask Commissioner Rainey to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll have our roll call.
Commissioner Best to be a shepherd, Commissioner Isaac Owens, Vice Chair Jay Wesley Rainey,
Here.
Chairman Joshua Delso.
Alive and present, thank you, ma'am. At this time, do we have a motion to for approve, uh, today's agenda?
Challenger. I make a motion that we am in this to have an executive session after the, uh, approval regularly minutes for personnel reasons.
Um, alright, is there, um, is there a second?
I said.
Right, is there probably a move a second that we, um, amend to add executive session? Um, shortly after which, I'm sorry?
After the approval of regular meetings for June the third.
Okay, after approval of regular meetings, in discussion. Uh, the only thing I add, uh, this body can elect to go into executive session at by motion at any time. Is that correct? Consider turn, so you don't have to make official amendment to that agenda, when we have a call, we can work together. You can go into executive session, so, um, for future references, no need to make a, amend official agenda. Alright, uh, any other discussion? Seeing now, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Alright, it is approved, we shall amend the agenda to include an executive session for personnel right after our approval of regular meetings. Alright, with that, you will have approval of, uh, budget meeting minutes for May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five.
Second.
It's been properly moved a second that we approve the budget minute meetings for May twenty eighth. Alright, in a discretion. Seeing now, she'll proceed to vote, uh, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yeah.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, it is approved. Alright, approval of regular meeting for our June third meeting, do we have a motion in a second? So, it's no problem to move a second that we approve regular meeting meetings for June third, in discretion? Seeing now, alright, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, it is approved. Uh, alright, at this time, um, I think we have been to jump to go into executive session for personnel. Alright. No, it's on the agenda, it's technically not, so there's no need for a motion, right? Alright, we should we go into executive session at this time, to discuss the matter of personnel.
Second.
Alright, been properly moved a second that we go into executive session to discuss the matter of personnel, alright? In a discretion. Seeing now, I would say, let me know about what's what, ah, I think I heard throughout, so, check in until executive session, left, right?
This way.
I have. Alright, can we have a motion to come out the, uh, executive session?
Second.
Is there a proper move a second that we come out to executive session at ten AM? Alright, um, I would say, let me know about what's what, ah, alright, motion carries, we're out of executive session, here we back into regular session. Alright. Uh, next, if you intention for Ms. Robinson, good morning to you, how you doing?
Good morning, good morning, commissioners.
Morning. If you could introduce yourself and your agency, we know, but just so the public can know and always be informed.
That's right, that's right, I am Monica Robinson, and I'm the Executive Director of Chris County Community Council Family Connection. I'm so glad that you all have me here, and I'm here to, uh, give you all an overview of our annual plan for FY twenty six and some information that we have that's been released, um, by our twenty twenty five Kids Count Data Book. Um, so again, I appreciate you all having me. Uh, let's see if we woke up. Is it on? That's always the question, there it goes. Okay, so most of you all know, um, as our chairman has said, what is Georgia Family Connection Partnership? Um, and we are a state nonprofit, and we are appointed by the legislative, uh, legislators. We have a duty to address the needs of the children and families that are in Chris County. Um, and in all of the families in Georgia, uh, all the counties in Georgia have a family connection collaborative. Um, so we are tasked with bringing together local agencies, organizations, businesses, individuals, so that means, yes, community members, even if you're not attached in the organization, you come too. Um, but we basically are tasked to hit five indicators, um, which are that our children are healthy, they're ready to start school, they're successful once they get in school, they live a safe and stable, um, lifestyle, and then our community is thriving and then hopefully robust as a result of those things. And it's those indicators that, um, our state sees, and it tells the story of our county. So, those, um, measurements, without them being here and being in Chris County and being at every meeting, it gives them a summary and basically a snapshot of what we are and what we're doing, how we're doing. Um, so we have been established since nineteen ninety six, um, and you'll see up there, that's a picture of our Back to School Bash, and I'll circle back to that. That is coming up as well. Um, but to, uh, to go back to our, our origin, we've been established since nineteen ninety six. We are in the J R Doughty Family and Youth Resource Building, everybody knows that as the Doughty Building, and that's right in between the rec and the pool. So sometimes you miss us if you blink when you're just going down there, but we're over there. So this is our overall rank this year for, uh, the twenty twenty five Kids Count Data Book in Georgia. Um, the National Twenty Twenty Five Kids Count Data Book was released on Monday, June ninth, by the Annie Casey Foundation, and it's reporting that Georgia ranks thirty ninth out of fifty states in the nation for overall child and family well-being. We fell two spots from twenty twenty four. It is a troubling reversal, um, after making a lot of progress in the recent years. Um, it is our state's lowest overall ranking in the past seven years. But we continue to struggle, um, in the family and community and health domains, reflecting an increase in our child and teen death rate and just a nominal improvement in our stubbornly high low birth rate. Georgia saw its largest lapse in the economic well-being domain, dropping from thirty two to thirty seven. And according to the report, we have four hundred and sixty one thousand children in our state that are living in poverty. So as you can see, just from those numbers that were released just this month, we still have a lot of work to do as a state, not just our county, but, um, overall in Georgia. This is our data specifically for Chris County that we are basing our annual plan on this year. So as you can see, in Chris County, the children that are living in poverty, we have about forty three point nine percent in our county. And that's, um, almost double what, uh, we have in the state of Georgia, a little bit over double. Um, the state of Georgia is at nineteen point five for their children who are living in poverty, which makes that a focus point for our annual plan as to the work, the programs and services that we need. You'll see for families with children with annual incomes, less than a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty threshold, Chris County again is higher than the, uh, uh, state at sixty one per, uh, point six percent uh, compared to our state's overall twenty eight point one percent. And then, children with a substantial incident of abuse and or neglect. Um, we are, again, over the average with seven point nine substantiated incidences of child abuse and neglect um, per one thousand, um, and our state is at three point nine. And to add to that, our, um, numbers are increased, not due to, as much due to abuse, but to neglect has been the hot point for our county, so not as much as abuse as it is neglect. That was my watch. You didn't say watches, Chairman, I'm sorry. We'll have to add that, you gotta add that too. I'm so sorry, please excuse me. So, I know that you all care, uh, cause we care as a community. And in order for our community to thrive and grow, and for those numbers to decrease, um, and our, our families receive the support that they need, we really have to come together. And that's what the collaborative is about. Um, we're here as a collaborative to bring together businesses, as I said, individuals, community resources, that we can collaborate and use our resources wisely. Um, not only just our resources, but our brains, our ideas, the activities, the programs that we have. If we're not working together and we're working in silos, we're doing our community a disadvantage. And we're not maximizing the resources that we have. Some of us have little resources in our nonprofits or businesses, um, but if we bring it together with other businesses, little becomes more. So we've got to work together to make an impact in Chris County, and I included a few pictures on here of some of the initiatives and strategies that we have. Um, and you'll see, uh, we have in the left-hand corner, the family that we were able to partner with our business, um, community uh, uh, and our leaders here in Chris County, to, um, get them from a homeless situation into permanent housing. Um, and our community really came together for that, our businesses, um, Wes Frazier, our, I mean, Farmer's Furniture, just everyone really came together, um, and we were able to find housing for this family and fully furnish that house as a community. Just an example of what happens when we collaborate, whereas me by myself, I might have been only been able to get an air bed or an air mattress, whereas when we came all together, we were able to fully furnish our house for a homeless family. You'll see up there is our Team Maids, Every Choice Matters, that is coming back, um, just a little spoiler alert. Next year, we'll be running our Team Maids in March again with, uh, the Chris County High School. Um, we do that every three years so that our kids don't get, you know, used to Team Maids and know what's happening, try to keep them surprised. Um, and that way, the only people who will repeat, or children who will repeat, are freshmen who will then become seniors, which is great because there's just so much growth that happens between becoming a freshman and a senior and your choice and what happens. So, we kind of give them a freshman before they get out the door. And then you'll see we have our Father Daughter Dance, um, in the right-hand corner, that is a community event that serves as a fundraiser for the, uh, Chris County Community Council and to advocate for those familiar relationships and create the positive childhood experiences rather than those adverse childhood experiences. And then you'll see in the corner here, on the left bottom, that is our community cafe. Um, we go to our Housing Authority Community Centers every month. Um, our next one is July fourteenth, uh, we'll be going to present different matters. Um, one of the big pushes that we, you'll see we have, is we're worried about attendance in Chris County. Our attendance, um, numbers have not been great, we were, um, the worst in our state, um, in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. So for this twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, we're going to do a big community push on how important it is to attend school, how important it is, um, that our kids get their education, because if they're not there, then our efforts around literacy, our efforts around our Georgia milestones and proficient, that none of that matters if our children aren't at school. And then we have some volunteers in, here in the middle, um, our volunteer, the backbone of Chris County, uh, Community Council, because without the volunteers, it won't get done, I can't do it all by myself, um, and my husband wouldn't let me. So, we need volunteers, and so if you're interested in any community events, um, whether it's with the, uh, health fair, whether it's with the mother and son dance, Back to School Bash, anything you are interested in volunteering for, we need you, we need volunteers. And our Chris Care Awards follows up with that, because our Chris Care Awards is a volunteer, it's an award ceremony for volunteers in our community. It's an opportunity for us to acknowledge those volunteers who just really go above and beyond, are just selfless. And we want to give them their flowers while we're still, while they're still here, rather than commemorating them after they're gone. We need to celebrate them and tell them how much we appreciate them at the Care Awards. And there's some more pictures, I won't go through all those, our mental health strategy team, um, we did a walk this year for mental health awareness, for May, that was a great success. All of these things you all can be a part of. I want to just make that so clear, these are not members-only clubs, anybody can come to the meetings, and we want you there. So this is our annual plan, um, and I won't bore you and read all of this to you, um, but this is what, this is how we move. Our annual planning process, um, takes place once a year in January, and that is when our community is invited to come together. The data is presented for our county, and we come together as a group and decide, okay, what do we need to work on? Where we like to work on, what things we like to work on, and then what work is already being done. And all those things go into our annual plan, and that's our roadmap for the next at least three to five years as to the work that we're doing, because we're not going to see an impact on these numbers in a couple months, not even in a year. A lot of these, um, indicators that you see that are low are going to take us some years to see those numbers come down. So, um, I want to encourage anybody who's out there and making cha, you know, making moves and doing anything that's for our community, if you're not seeing immediate results, don't get weary and well-doing, because it takes a little bit for us to see these things. Even the data that we have, you know, is, is last year, it's not showing us what's happening right now today. So, um, it, it takes time for those results to come across. I want to point out what we are working on this year, uh, the highlights. Um, so our homeless coalition you'll see on there is, uh, one of the strategies that we're working on. And again, all these strategies, you're, if you're interested in any of those, and that's our commissioners. If you all have a heart or a passion for any of these strategy teams, we need you at the meetings. Uh, not only for you to, uh, know what we're talking about and what the, the move is and what the plans are, but also for you all to be able to, um, give us your strategies and the ideas that you're hearing from your wards as to what they want to see happening in the community. So our homeless coalition is, um, working for children, really for children, I always tell them that, it's not for the adults. You just get, you're just the benefactor, it's to keep our kids in housing, um, so that they don't have to worry about adult things as children. Um, and so with the homeless coalition, we're able to help families who are, um, facing homelessness or are already homeless. So it's not a, a preventative measure at this point, it is more of an emergency, uh, measure, so if you're facing homeless or you are homeless, um, we are receiving, uh, donations from the community members and donations from our businesses, sponsorships, to help those families avoid homelessness. With our, uh, family, our Health and Wellness Coalition, um, which is also a family support cohort, we're working to, um, we're working on those abuse and neglect numbers you all saw. Um, and what we're doing with that is the community cafes. We're trying to get the information and resources out to our families that are most at risk to let them know the options they have when it comes to daycare or being unable to fund daycare. We have some funds that we have been set aside to be able to prevent those, those neglect, um, instances. As I said, stated before, in Chris County, are, the majority of our substantiated incidences are from neglect. So that comes, of course, from them being left at home, um, it also comes, uh, left at home alone, without proper supervision, um, and then also from some substance abuse, uh, we have a lot of mental and substance abuse incidences where, um, they're not properly supervised. Um, and then one of the, uh, the, the other initiative that we are, um, working on pretty heavily is our, um, Mental Health Strategy Team. Uh, with Mental Health Strategy, we are working to help the, our rural communities um, with emergency services, crisis services, um, overcoming the barriers that we have in rural communities and when it comes to mental health services, um, we work out the kinks every two months, um, between our hospital, our, um, uh, COC, which is, uh, uh, Middle Flint, um, and all mental health providers that are in our area. Our PD is there, our Sheriff Department, all of those, um, community agencies that deal with um, individuals that are experiencing a mental health crisis, and we try to make sure that we have services and active, uh, programs that are enabled for them. So this is just a couple of the, a few of the programs and services you might not know that are, um, either spearheaded by the Chris County Community Council, or we're heavily involved in. Um, again, I won't have you read, I won't read all of those, but you can see that we're interested in literacy, we're interested in affordable housing, we're interested in youth enrichment, we're interested in our community thriving. So if you're interested in any of those, um, strategies or any of those programs you see up there, you can just see me, I'll, I'll put it up here, you guys can take a picture of it and contact me. And that leads us to the next slide, which is, we need you. As I stated before, um, this does not get done with just a couple people. We need, uh, businesses, we need community members, we need our city, we need our county, we need everybody involved on the same page uh, for us to be able to make the difference that we need to in our county. In order for us to work together, we have to come together. And I highlighted a, um, just a part of this mantra that we have at Georgia Family Connection, and it's just that true collaboration among partners is hard work, and it's messy, and there's not a quick fix. It's going to take time, but it is worth it, and that's where the change begins to happen. So, um, you know, when we come together, it's not always we have the solution. It's sometimes we're scratching our heads and thinking about who has, who's, who's not here that has the solution, and how do we get them to the table? Um, so, I invite, I'm inviting you, this is your personal invite to join us Thursday, um, which is the fourth Thursday of every month, we meet at the Collaborative Building at nine thirty. And, uh, when we meet at the Collaborative, uh, the, or, at the Collaborative Meeting, we go over our annual plan to progress, what our partners are doing, what we're doing, go over our strategies for success, and then, of course, we are able to break out into our strategy team meetings from there to try and make the change we need. With that said, one of the biggest things that we're doing, our next program or service is the Back to School Bash, and this is our fifth annual year, and this continues to grow, y'all. If you've not been to the Back to School Bash, you need to come this year. It's August second, between eleven and two, and, um, that is a free community event. Anybody that's coming through, any kid that comes through those doors, we want to make sure they get free school supplies that's going to support them for the school year. The point of the Back to School Bash is to make sure that our children know they have a community behind them, that's pushing them to succeed and wants them to thrive in this community, and we want to give them the tools that they need to succeed. So part of that comes with donations, school, um, school supply donations, monetary donations, we need all of that to make this happen. This is going to be our first year since, um, COVID, that we're going to have to supply the school supplies. Um, when we, when COVID hit, we got some, um, CARES Act monies, and that has been able to supply the school supplies, uh, for our kids for the past few years. That money's gone. So now, as a community, we've got to come together to get those supplies for our babies. So, um, we're asking every business and community organization in Cordial to like adopt a school supply. So, pencil is already gone, guys, sorry, first come, first served. But backpacks, um, to start collecting backpacks. Our goal is to be able to supply six hundred children with their school supplies for their grade level. So we need crowns, we need binders, we need, uh, notepads, we need all of the above. And as a community, we can supply that for our kids, we can do that, we just need everyone to jump on board. So, um, we're asking everyone to register and sign up for that, we're going to have backpack giveaways, they're going to get fruit, uh, a free lunch, they're going to get free haircuts and hairdos, um, and all of this is sponsored by our community members. They're all just pouring in their time, not looking for anything in return for this. Um, we got the college and military recruiters out, just everything they need. The best band in the land is going to come and, uh, jump us off and get us excited for the school year, and so we want you guys to be excited about that with us and contribute to it. This is just a quote that, again, we go by, that we believe that, uh, lasting change is local, lending support, knowledge, and partnerships to craft local solutions to local challenges. We believe that by working together, we can nurture children and families who thrive in vibrant communities everywhere. We envision a Georgia where all children are healthy, prime for school, and succeed when they get there, and where strong families con, contribute to vibrant, robust communities that thrive. So you are invited to join us, and, um, it looks a little funny, it didn't look like that when I made it. But, uh, if you'll take a picture of it, my contact information is there. If you're interested in any of the committees that I stated earlier, if you're interested in volunteer hours, if you just want to know more information, I'm available, you can contact me, you can text me, email, that's my cell phone number. If I don't answer, I will call you back. Um, and you can send me an email as well with any ideas that you have, and again, everyone is welcome to attend. I thank you all so much for your time, and commissioners, you all have a copy of our annual plan, so you can see that in more detail. And it's also going to be available on our website for community members, if you want to look at the annual plan in more detail and be a part of that process. Do you have any questions for me, or comments?
Any questions? Um, I do have a, um, comment, you know, maybe a thing. Um, thank you for everything you've done, um, I used to, um, go to the Thursday, um, when we was, um, when this, uh, so I got to get back on board. I usually, my work schedule prevents me to come, but it's lightened up a bit.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that, um, we chose, I chose to do with that project, we refer to discretion of funding, is scaling nonprofits, because there's been some nonprofits here since, you know, before I was born and when I was a kid, that has been doing this work, but had stayed small.
Mm-hmm.
They stayed aiming for everything out of the founder's pocket.
Yeah.
That's not where nonprofits should be.
Mm-hmm.
And so that was a particular skill set, that was a particular thing that executive directors, founders, whatever their organizational structure may be, um, should know and understand how to get that, I believe. Like you said, collaboration is the backbone, but one of the things too is the nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
That's the piece we're missing here.
Yeah.
Um, we, we don't have enough interest in doing the human work. Uh, and our biggest one, you know, um, they're diversified now, or what have you, so they're not particularly focused on the human capacity, or what have you, uh, in, in public administration, and they don't know whatever you want to call it, they have this thing, do you develop place or keep?
Yeah.
And that's one of the biggest arguments, right? Or what have, I think you should do both.
Right.
Because if you don't do both, then you're going to be in trouble, or what have you, and so, I'm with you, but we're looking at anybody interested is on our city Facebook page, or what have you, from, if you know nonprofits in that way. Right now, we're thinking about a six-week, um, life boot camp, to go through the A's and A and Z of it, or what have you, from, you know, vision to mission to strategy, things like that, um, it's been something I've been working on a long, long time. When I first moved back, I started a nonprofit, uh, because I thought that's where it, you know, would take. And then I realized the pros, um, that is presented when you're really trying to do the work, the resources, the knowledge, you got the, the things that, um, you do, so, I, I'll be in touch to talk more about it. Um, and with your, uh, partnership and everything, uh, we can probably work through it and work on it together. Because you do so much important work, and I'd like to have you in the room, uh, once we get it started. Uh once we get it started, to be able to speak to those needs, because um. Last thing I'll say that was a, uh I won't call it business, but they contacted me and they had grants. And so they asked me, did you have nonprofits? And it's been about two years actually, cause we're about to go to GMA Conference now, I remember having one of them work on the grant. While I was at the conference, at GMA Conference in Savannah. Um and I was surprised by. The lack of the ability to write that narrative and also understand the impact that it makes in doing the work.
Yep, I just can't put it together.
Can't put it together, and so that's the vision of this, is putting together, have you be able to do the work, have the city be able to do the work that is needed. County to do it, so that's the broad vision, so I'll be in touch in the next three days. So we can talk about it, plan and get, you know, a few people at the table and come up with some nonprofits that can utilize that. The the money's there, the train's there, um so.
Just gotta grab it.
Just gotta grab the people, and so, and and Parwitz already there. Uh Cordial has everything you need, it's successful, it's just not connected.
That's right.
It's just not scaled just yet, so.
Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have uh Speaker of Defense, well, it's Michelle Murray. And the ordinance number is number two zero two four dash oh three.
Good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's having a great day. Um as you know, I'm Claude Michelle's.
Give me one moment.
Absolutely.
Um you got five minutes, I just wanna read those. Your name and your address, uh uh so we're making sure it's fair and proper for everybody. So if you'll say your name and your uh your name would do and everything.
Michelle Murray, I'm Claude Michelle's at nine oh eight Sixteenth Avenue East, Cordial, Georgia. Absolutely. As you know, I have an alcohol license, I've had it now for six years. Um it's come to my attention about uh a, I say a new ordinance, uh an ordinance that was passed. Uh a little over uh about a year and a half ago, March of two twenty twenty four. Um when I received my alcohol license, one of the ordinances was to have an outside security firm. To patrol in the parking lot um during the hours that I was open. Due to liability reasons, there is not a security firm anywhere in the United States that would do that. I have security, I've had security since the day I opened. The board at the time, the the commissioners, and everyone told me, Miss Michelle, it's not broke, don't fix it. I've now been there seven years with zero violations. I love that the police officers have been there, as soon as I found out, I did start doing that. We can't afford it. I'm just gonna get right to the point. Now, I have, one of my security guys is an OK certified. Post-certified DOC, he has his numbers, he has his training. But he's Department of Corrections versus law enforcement, the only difference is, he can't arrest. But it's my understanding, off duty doesn't arrest. So I'm requesting that I be able to to use my security. One of the 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 problems is. With law enforcement there and the patrol car there, it hinders the business. People are scared to come in because they're scared, oh my god, I wanna get a DUI. It's just a mindset, and I'm not saying that it's not a good idea. We have a business in town that's making our law enforcement look bad. We tried to get law enforcement to do this six years ago, and they didn't want to do to the liability. And the way it was gonna make them look, and when I say it makes them look bad, they don't even realize it. They're outside, they're doing their jobs, and they're doing it great, but while they're outside doing their jobs. What's going on inside? Can you please play the video of that security on that establishment?
Yours or the other?
The other. And and this was put on Facebook, so it's it's not something that was. This was posted on Facebook for everybody to see, uh from this establishment. Now, I wanna let everybody know, when somebody comes to my establishment, the rules are on the wall outside the building. There will be no fighting, no drugs, you will be wanted, you will be frisked. This is their security. That's a bartender. This is what's going on inside while our law enforcement's sitting outside. That's not fair to our law enforcement, that's not keeping our community safe. That's not a responsible owner. And that's why law enforcement doesn't want to be there. Now, back to this. If we have to do the law enforcement and I can't use my DOC. The only other thing that I'm requesting is can we adjust the time? Y'all have it from eight till close. Okay, nobody comes in till eleven o'clock. And and I could show you.
So your time, or expired, um it's five minutes. So from what I gather, is you're requesting to use your own security, who is post-certified, not law enforcement, but from the Department of Corrections.
Yes, sir.
And then you were saying, if that's not a viable option for us, you were requesting to adjust the time to.
To at least like ten thirty, because people don't start coming in anymore until eleven thirty, twelve o'clock. But at least like ten thirty, and I have a video of of my bar at ten thirty on a Saturday night. That I could show you, the only people in there is my security. But honestly, if if we can't do that, I'm gonna have to let my security go to have that one police officer. Because this is the slow season. Last week, I paid that police officer one night, what I deposited in three nights. It's the slow season. Were able to close on Friday nights at three o'clock now, we closed at two. There was nobody there. I had sixteen people come in. During the week, on, we're we're open Tuesday and Thursday, I'm closed by ten o'clock. On Wednesday night, we have a a loophole tournament, we're out of there by midnight. But the gentleman that works for me, that's with DOC, he's actually a trainer now. He trains with depart, he trains everybody at the Department of Corrections now. So he has all of his certifications, I've turned over his his DOC numbers, uh his post key numbers and everything. But they said because it wasn't law enforcement certified as far as being able to arrest, but like I said. If it's an off-duty officer, they don't arrest, they would have to cost them money. But I don't think I've ever in seven years had anybody arrested for my place. And yes, I'm gonna pat myself on the back for that one. I'm gonna pat myself on the back for zero violations in seven years when I'm in the bar. But but honestly, if Mr. Odom was here, he'd tell you the same thing, that would put Mr. Odom out of business.
Any questions? No questions. Um so the ordinance was in twenty twenty four, you know, that's the ordinance in twenty twenty four. Um and I think we 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 did particularly for one particular business versus another. And we thought it was a good idea at the time, but um if you look at the ordinance, I did not sign it because I didn't agree with it. Uh at the time, I do believe that we need responsible um security. Um and I know officers don't get paid a lot for what they do today, so any opportunity. Have to have actual income is definitely something you wanna ensure. However, I I almost see it as double different because as a business owner, you pay occupational tax. Um as a citizen, you pay taxes, the people who probably come, they pay taxes, paying sale taxes. Uh and Cordial is small enough, if you have a business at night. That where most of the officers should be somewhere near. So I never thought that we should have it structured in the first place, to be honest with you. Um and that's why I always caution about being too primitive to act. When you have one incident who might be an outlier, that make the sweeping policy for that instance, you gotta thoroughly think it out. And everything, so you know, I don't get a vote unless it's tied, so I'm just talking at this point. But I I never really thought that was a good idea in the first place. Um to have a, it be that particular strict. I do understand the security concerns, I don't think that was what was going on. Particularly in in your place, and I'm sympathetic towards you as far as, you know, one night deposit, I know how it is, then a business owner. And um um you know, as you said, you know, had to be the officer three nights and and during the slow season. So um I don't know um the solution for this in particular, um or what have you. But I I am sympathetic towards him, I wish it wouldn't be that way, I never wanted it to be this way. I think um basically sometimes when we have issues, I have a thing, it's case by case. And um you know, um. Um I will say, in all honesty, most people know me, just willing to be a blind. Um the, I don't know where it's definitely that was in the other, but to make your case distinct with your stuff, don't worry about what everybody else is doing. Um just because you don't wanna shine the negative light, because if you showed that video, my mind, they, we do need. Because if that was working on security, then we do need police. It's been there inside, so we almost just kind of productive.
Yeah, cause uh that that's the establishment that started this.
Right, so yeah, so that's what I'm saying, that, you know, it was almost kind of productive.
But but uh but that that's that's why I understand this, and I'm not asking for this to go away. But I'm asking, can we include DOC with this? As long as they are post-certified, you know, with their OP number.
I think that's. So the term was your? And my thing is always, I have three simple rules of what we can do. Feasible, impossible, given finances, resources, and things like that, legal, you know. Yeah, if it meets those things, I'm I'm fine with it, you know. Um um but but uh yeah. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you. We have no speaker on specific agenda items? All right, thank you, all right, at that, at this point, we'll go ahead and go on to our um specific uh. Department heads report, accomplishment goals, all right, so that will start the review.
Good morning, good morning, how's everybody? I'll be presenting for two weeks, but I will make it short, um for the two cycles. Um so for June third. Uh attended the Georgia Land Bank Authority uh Committee Meeting, uh we talked about recruiting other cities. Uh talked with the uh Southwest Georgia Regional Commission. Submitted a pre, I I mean, uh we got the, we received almost fifty calls for the CHIP program. And um that was a very good response. Met with the landlord that owns about thirty-five acres of property here, um to try and put together a four H camp. So we met with the property owner and four H to uh try to put that together, we've had two meetings. Working on the third one now, attended the accident um report meeting on the twenty first. Uh attended a grant webinar for the uh Southern Crescent Regional Commission. Uh on the twenty second and submitted a pre-application for that. Um and then talked with uh ACE, which is the Access to Capital for Entrepreneurs on the twenty third. We're working on scheduling some uh work sessions to bring in uh information and resources for those small businesses. I'm going to the Community Development um Director Report, uh there's still a preservation meeting, it's set for June sixth. Uh at uh, I'm excuse, uh June at six PM. Um and then the border zoning appeals is set for June twenty-six at ten AM. That's the commission report for June third, any questions? I will give an update of some of these um items on June third for the for today's meeting. So I submitted the um Southern Crescent Regional Commission Grant uh pre-application on the fifth. Um they said that there were about ninety applicants, but we uh attended a webinar yesterday, and there were actually three hundred and. Twenty-eight applications, and we made it to the second round with the grant proposal that that was submitted. I did leave a copy, I put a copy of that grant proposal on each body, on everybody's uh position, station. So that you could go ahead and review it if you have any questions, either now or later, please feel free. Um but it is to create a walking trail from downtown to Farmer's Market. Take a few of the buildings that are downtown, create a a business incubator in one. Pop-up shop in another, some uh loft apartments, and um. Uh that walking trail that will allow that connectivity, kinda like the Belt Line in Atlanta. Um went to uh Department of Natural Resources Rails to Trails Program. And the goal is to actually put these two programs together, the Rails to Trails Program and the C grant. So that we can use up to about two million dollars to recreate that trail. And work on parking and some structures downtown. Uh Monica and I attended that um webinar yesterday. And we have to submit by July the twen- the eighteen, July eighteen. Um chip, we set up, what I did was I set up workshops. Because a lot of the people were seniors, and we wanted to make sure that we got complete applications and all of the information. So yesterday, we set up a workshop, we had about twenty people, Miss Marcia that works up here with us was very. Yesterday, we set up a workshop. We had about twenty people. Ms. Marsha that works up here with us was very instrumental. Mister Ricky also came to assist. Um but we set up for twenty people to come out yesterday. We walked through page by page, um filled out the applications. We then got the their information and for the pieces of information that they did not have. They're gonna come here, they're we're gonna make copies of IDs and um the things like insurance and stuff like that that are needed. So that we can send in complete packages to um the uh Regional Commission. So that went well. We also got another one set up for the twenty-fourth, so the people that came yesterday, we'll meet with them one-on-one. We got a little better understanding of how to set it up, so we may take a scanner or printer or something with us. Over to the community clubhouse next time and be able to create those documents and complete the package right there, but it went very well. Met with uh the young lady again at the uh Takase Farms. Which is thirty-five acres, which is right next to the Farmer's Market and four H. Um again, I'll keep you apprised of that. I did attend the um Community Action Council. Meeting over in Monizuma, that was fantastic. They also have a series of programs like Fatherhood Program and diaper giveaways and things like that. So I'm gonna be meeting with them, trying to see what programs we don't have that we can bring to um to the city. Um Community Directors Report on June eighteenth at six P M, we have the historic preservation meeting. There are three homes that are gonna be reviewed at that time or presented at that time. For the sake of time, I won't go into each one of the uh specific addresses. Board of Zoning Appeals, on the twenty-sixth of June, they come back up at ten A M. For a reason, a four A, a zoning variance. Because the way things are set up now, the ha- the house has to be seventy-five feet wide. But the lot is only fifty feet wide, so what they're asking is to have a variance so that the front of the house. Meets the property line. So the way it appears right now, if this is the property, the house. Is wider than the property, so what they're asking is to make the property line, the front of the house. The same as the width of the property and they're only doing only single-family homes. And there are no planning commission meetings, no revolving loan fund meetings scheduled at this time.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, sir. How are you doing?
Good morning, I'm doing well. How are you? Uh my first report is the sales tax collection report for the month of May. We collected four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy cents. In the financial report, you have a copy in your packet. There's really not much to point out except for um. Payroll wages for the month of May was higher because we had three payrolls. So you will see an increase in that, but other than that, that's all I have. Do you have any questions? Alright, thank you.
Good morning. Uh on the May twenty-seventh report, we had three vehicle fires. Seven grass rubbish fires, twenty-five medical calls, eight motor vehicle accidents. Two public service calls. Two structural collapse, eleven false alarms. Four gas spills and then nine that's classified as other other calls. And that's the only thing that we had on the uh on the May. Twenty-seventh. And then the June tenth, we had uh under goals. The uh our goals were and always happened to provide best possible service. To the citizens and visitors of Cordill through firefighter recruitment and retention. vet professionalism, extensive training and quick response. Uh emerg- effective emergency mitigation, community risk reduction program. And community engagement. Under the accomplishments, we completed our G C I C audit. Everything went well there. We uh we also hosted the Summer Central Georgia Fire Chiefs Association Meeting here in Cordill. At the Community Clubhouse, Seaship prepared the uh and served meals. Bennett Fire Safety Products sponsored the meal. And the meeting was well-intended. We had about thirty-five fire chiefs and representatives from state agencies. And there were quite a few comments while we were in the clubhouse. From the chiefs and the other people about how nice it was, so that was encouraging to know they were complementing our community. The uh, we had one fire drill at the uh Chris County Hospital that we completed with them. And we also, we were awarded a twelve-thousand-dollar grant through. Uh Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security and the grant. Is gonna be used to purchase four light pack one thousand A E Ds. And there's a special thanks for Mister Boris Hill. He uh for organizing the meeting where where we received the grant information. And also represented Noel Williams for submitting our grant request to the Appropriations Committee. Uh of the state legislature, so all that went went through and went well. So it saved saved our tax dollars. Yes, allow.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have my report in your packet. I'm just gonna highlight just a few items on here on both reports. Um for our June third regular report. On May the seventh, um well, we'll preface this by saying that July is the renewal time for our. Our liability insurance, our fleet insurance, gas, cyber, et cetera. So on May the seventh, began uh completing the applications and gathering information for the upcoming renewal. That information has been sent to our uh insurance broker and we're awaiting a renewal quote on it right now. Um also on May the eighth, I had the opportunity to participate in an interview for the Planning Community Development Director Position. And on the fourteenth, uh the information for the semi-annual roster for the firefighter cancer benefit program was submitted to G M A. And then uh lastly, on that report, um as you know, we have hired the. Seasonal work-based learning student as a mechanic in our fleet department and all indications he's doing a very good job. On the uh goals report. Under Goals One, uh performance appraisal, all of those have been completed, received by the H R department. And we are entering that information into the H R program. And we are um starting gathering information for development based succession plan. Right now, we're renewing, uh reviewing age, tenure and retirement eligibility, just to see which positions uh. We may be looking at filling in the future. We have promoted an in-house applicant to our Fleet Superintendent, Mister Brian Miller. He was our Assistant Fleet Superintendent in the Fleet Department. And we're currently cross-training an equipment operator who's in the street department to assist meter management during peak times. This is the uh the system, the uh street sweeper operator, and as you know, our street sweeper was involved in a wreck. Uh a few weeks ago, so he has some downtime, so he's taking that opportunity to learn some skills in different departments and we're utilizing. Uh that in the meter department. And then lastly, um our career opportunities are are being posted at South Georgia Technical College, Albany State University. Georgia Southwestern State University and Fort Valley State University. And that's all I have. Any questions?
When when the application is. Committed, someone interested in the position, what what's the process of turn the application in and what happens from there?
I I think this question's been asked a couple of times. We were we review it, um and if they meet the minimum qualifications for the position. Then we send it to whichever department and they may be applying for. In other words, whichever superintendent that division uh is hiring and have them review it. And if they would like to interview the person, they contact us, uh we set up interview, we set up interview. Um and then uh whatever necessary background information we have to do after that, if the superintendent or anyone, anyone else. Whatever department wants to look at this employee further.
Okay, then wh- what we say.
If the job calls for, let's say, high school diploma, valid George driver's license. That's a number requirement. If they meet those two criteria, they go to the next step.
And the next step after that will be able to go to that particular department.
For for review.
For review.
Department head or superintendent for review.
Now, when they review, so it's up to them once they review to make the determination as to.
If they would like to interview.
If they like to interview them, but every application will come to H R first.
Uh for the exception of the police department, they're taking her her own over there.
So generally, after the application is submitted to H R, what's the what's the and and the minimal requirements are. Recognized. What's how what's the timeframe of the getting from your desk to the department?
By the end of the week usually.
So if that application submits money by Friday, then that.
Probably before Friday, they're notified they have one available.
And are they giving the application itself or are they giving the name?
No, they're giving the application itself. It's redacted and they're giving the the uh the application, any kind of resume or anything maybe that's submitted with all with it. So we have we have tracking procedure. We have to as well. As soon as we get it, we can't just receive it and turn around and pass it off. We have to track it for our purposes as well, so there's there's a couple of days in there. Once we get it, it's tracked, you know, put in our system and then from there, it's available, like for review.
So, okay, well, good, you just gave it, once put into your system. That that means those names is listed, so you can uh within, I'm gonna say within a certain amount of time, you can tell that a person that's perhaps. Applied for for a job um. Within a certain amount of time, within years, so if I almost you can go back and say, well, I know Isaac always has applied for a job at his last.
Yes, we can see what positions you've applied for. At the timeframe and anything's over than forty-five days, would it require you?
Over.
Uh over forty-five days, would it require a new application?
So and then they they if if. If a new application is required, um and still and we're still pulling from. Our website, um N D, we're using N D as well. And the other service just said that.
In addition to N D, we also use the uh G O G A, which is the Georgia National Association website. We post on there as well.
For coming short.
For our for our key positions, uh for superintendent, department head level positions.
For coming short, if somebody just um submitting that having a driver's license, they should almost make it past that minimum requirement.
And that that will be the very, very minimal for majority of our positions and we do have some, you know, that. Like driver's license, high school diploma, now if we had a, say, a dump truck driver, that's right, our equipment. Uh now if we had, you know, a dump truck driver, something like that, of course, we'll be looking for C D O driver. Depending on positions, what the minimum qualifications may be.
Any other questions? I I have a similar question, but probably a bit more specific to that. It's more about the work-based learnings um process. How do we receive students in game um determine who that student's gonna be?
We put in a request with Miss Fuller from the high school to let her know which positions we have. She sends us um anyone that may be interested. This young male was actually interested in an I T position. We didn't have anything available. Uh however, he's mechanically inclined, said he would still like to to try this position as well. So he was, uh we discussed it with the Fleet Superintendent at that time, which was Mister Fowler. He was willing to host him, uh so we brought him on board. This is actually the first uh work-based learning student we've ever had.
And so. We mainly, and I I know Miss Fuller, then my nephew came through her, um. So we basically rely on her to submit that student's for the program.
We have. They have to, they have to be, you know, enrolled in her program at the high school, be eligible for the work-based learning program for to come here. Uh and this was the only one, like I said, he was more interested in a I T type background. This was what I was going to college for this fall. Uh but he wasn't mechanically inclined, uh he did show an interest in the position we had available.
Any other questions? You got it, municipal court.
Good morning. Our May report, we had a total of three hundred thirteen traffic cases, twenty-five criminal cases. Three hundred thirty-eight total court cases. We ordered a total of seven bench wants, twenty-eight license suspensions. Total cash bonds, fines committed, deposits from C S R A and deposits from restitution. Um internet payments for a total of seventy-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars, seventy-one cents. We had one refund in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Alright, now our goals. Um to report accurate information to the court and permit to aim to officially adjudicate cases. Process case quickly and maintain accurate records. Um completed court dockets for the judge in the time of the matter. Scribe to provide accessible services, maintain integrity and ensure accountability. And I accompany me all dockets and court disposition was turned into the state all the time. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions?
Thank y'all. Everything is going well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank y'all.
That's right.
I'm already here, ready to go. Good morning. I'll just go through each department, like all the way through and then just do it that way. Um we'll we'll start with the police department. Uh these numbers were April twenty-ninth through May twenty-sixth, so they were for the last commission meeting. Uh as you're aware, uh total crimes, part one crimes, excuse me, they had a total of thirty-eight robberies, um. Which is like strong arm, things like that. We had two motor vehicle thefts. We had one, that one vehicle was recovered. Aggravated assaults, two, larcenies or other thefts. Total of twenty-nine, three of those were entering auto, eight of those were shoplifting with six arrests. As um with those uh eight cases and then eighteen other were related as thefts or categorized as thefts. Burglary, four, they were all, all four of those were residential. Our part two crimes was a hundred and fifty-four. For that reporting period, incidents reported a hundred twenty-four, community contacts, eight citations issued, two hundred and ten. Um that numbers kind of went up because of the governor's initiative as far as um. Seatbelt clicker ticket was kind of involved in that too, so that's why that number would be high, be pretty high. Uh warnings issued, we had a total of seventy-two and calls reported or, excuse me, calls for service were one thousand, three hundred and seventy-four. Uh for that reporting period. Uh as for our goals and accomplishments with the police department, um. We don't have anybody currently on our hiring process. At the time, we had two. Uh we have hired that one person and he will be starting on the twenty-third, comes with a wealth of experience, seventeen years of experience in law enforcement. Um supervision, management certifications, training certifications, so he'll be uh in a sergeant's position. Starting on the twenty-third. Um strategies to attract newer officers, we just continue to promote. Um strategies to attract newer officers, we just continue to promote uh different ways that we can, um uh seems to be working pretty well. Um as far as community-related events that we're involved in, June and July for the most part. Is a slower uh time for our uh event committee. However, August, we pick right back up with the back-to-school bash. So we'll be involved in that as we are every year. Uh advancements towards our policing certifications, we just continue to push through um our policy reviews. Our policy reviews, we have a lot of different policies within the department, so it just takes time, but we're getting there. I'm pretty pleased with the progress on that. That's all I have for the police department. I see any questions? She did. Uh I with us not doing the last, yeah, she graduated, uh that was earlier in the month. So yes, thank you. Officer Carlisle uh did graduate. This is the first uh twenty-week police academy uh that they did. So she comes, uh they teach a whole bunch more of extra like training, uh she comes with uh field sobriety, so for like DUIs, things like that, as well as. Rifle courses, just a bunch of added training that we would normally send officers to, now they do it in mandates. So yes, she graduated. She's already on field training and she's doing a great job, actually. So really pleased, thank you for reminding me on that. Not that I forgot, but it's just. So yes, definitely, um if there's no more questions, I'll move on to codes.
I do, I do have a question.
Sure.
Um. After hearing Michelle's presentation, you were here for it, um. What's your take on using the DOC or is that a scheduling? I mean, this sounds like a tough scheduling thing to cover for you in the evenings and. Patrol and shortfalls, potential, uh I mean, I just see, I'm just interested in what you have to say about it.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on that. Um my thing is, and the only reason why I I think a lot of my recommendations and. When it was first kind of formulated, were taken into consideration is because of the security and the people that were hired. Around that time, there was an issue where a security guard at another establishment actually shot or used their weapon. Um and to come to find out, they were convicted felon and shouldn't have had a weapon to begin with. Um so. I would, I'm okay with security, private security even, as long as there's some type of vetting process, like a background process or something like that. To where we can make sure that, you know, we don't have that similar situation where you got a security guard in there that's a convicted felon with a with a weapon. Um that that's my big thing. Um I know the city attorney did speak to it, um officers can make arrests and we have made arrests. Um a lot of times what we try to do is we'll call the on-duty squad or patrol units to transport for us, so that way there's no lack. In coverage as far as any, you know, when we were hired to be security or whatever, um but we have made arrests and we do make arrests, so we can do that. Um tha- that's my biggest thing as far as the mandated. I don't really think that's necessarily a big issue, because you also talk about jurisdictional issues. If you were to hire somebody that doesn't have jurisdiction here, they're not gonna be able to make an arrest unless, I guess, it's a citizen's arrest, and at that point, I mean. I don't know how, uh they would have to call us anyway. Um but again, you you also had to look at it as to why these, I think some of these decisions may have been made is because what was going on at the time. Is we were being expected to basically sit right there and be their private security, not theirs, not Michelle's, but I'm talking another establishment. When we have a duty to the to the city, you know, we're we have to patrol the entire city and outside of. You know, being hired or some type of a part-duty, a part-time uh opportunity, we have a whole city to cover. And I think that's why some of these things were were factored uh or decided on.
And chief, the um the officers that are at these establishments are off duty, they're not on shift.
Correct, I, yeah, I'm glad you said that, kinda dragged my memory on something.
An incident happened, they have to call on duty because they're paid for.
Hmm, no.
No, I'm saying what you just said, they if an arrest is made, they usually coordinate with those who are on duty so they don't have to leave the job.
Correct, yes, yes.
Yeah, because they're off.
Yeah, but they don't have to necessarily call on duty officer because they have the jurisdiction.
Right.
And they can make the arrest and they normally do, will will make an arrest. It's just that if we're we're being, if there's, if we're being hired privately. We don't wanna leave the establishment un- un- you know, un-unoccupied, so to speak, uh so we would call somebody to transport for us. Now, we can, if we had two officers there, depending on the level of security they need, we can have one that transports and one stands by. Um you brought up an issue that I did wanna say. Oh, they were showing inside of the bar. A lot of times we're hired for patrol on the outside, that's a private establishment, so we can't enforce their. Rules that they have inside unless obviously there's a violation of law or or some type of city ordinance or something like that. So normally, we are outside, we don't deal with the inside portion of it. Uh that was another issue, but again, now you're getting on private property-type deals and and their own. Uh regulations or rules that they have, we can't enforce that, we don't enforce that, so.
One of the problems, Commissioner, we all know we pay the traffic ordinance to one business, that's right, you know, it's upon everybody, and sometimes people who comply with the law. Get caught up in the regulation, it happens all the time, you know. I I drive pretty safely, but uh. Uh speaking of it's all lies to be, but I go with it, but the other thing is, I didn't notice that she already had security. She just got somebody that doesn't qualify under the ordinance, just not really more experienced, uh expensive for um.
Right, I don't know the rates. I'll get into that. Thank you, Commissioner, any on that, that's great question, thank you. Alright, if that's it for the police department, I'll I'll move to codes. Again, I'll start with the numerical breakdown. Same reporting period, April twenty-ninth, May twenty-sixth, banned vehicles total of five, inspections six. Uh unsafe uh structures, they're basically dealing with that or cases that are that are have been inputted into our system, five. Weeds, junks prohibited, forty, again, it's that time of year where you have grass growing and things like that, so that's why that number's pretty high. As well as others, five others, that are just categorizes other. Uh move on to the goals and accomplishments, um continue to increase code compliance throughout all wards. Codes officers completed uh plan reviews and are now conducting inspections for new, the new Christian Homes complex. Uh so that's a positive thing, and um and the Aldi store, that's uh the renovation that's ongoing right now. Number two, the codes division continues sending officers to advanced training. Uh codes officers, they're scheduled to attend uh a four-hour, well, they already did it, actually, it was on the twelfth, the CEU. Class is basically a recertification class and they all successfully uh navigated through that and passed it. Number three, a- addressed blighted and commercial residential, codes officers completed renovation. Uh and occupancy inspections on new personal care home that's gonna go up hopefully on Twelfth Avenue East. And then the fourth, as far as this increase in our media presence, officers are spending time. So now what we're trying to do with codes is they're actually, uh when they're in their wards, not addressing any issues, they're trying to go around and just trying to bring awareness. Whether they see people walking, talking, business owners, things like that. Again, social media is one aspect of it, but also getting out there and just walking around in the neighborhoods and trying to make contacts with people. Um it's just a continued thing uh with codes, when when you're dealing with with something like this, so. They're doing that now, and from what I hear, that's going very well. They're actually making public contacts, so. I'm considering adding that as a stat because um they they're very busy doing that. That's all I have for codes. As you see the new construction and things, um different hall, different projects are moving forward. Again, I mentioned the Harveys, the Aldis, kinda renovation, that's moving forward, um. That's one thing of note. And then our completed projects, which that's pretty, it's pretty good for the year, be happy with that, that's all I have.
Any questions, your colleagues? I have questions, I'm not quite sure as long as we are curious. Uh here, we had a food truck issue this past weekend with um Walmart inviting. Um um shells out.
Okay.
For anything, and. From the reports, from where I got a handful of, and being circulated, oh, social media. Is that, uh officers came and um. Got food in, they told them they can be out there.
Don't check on that.
And, uh so they had to, we didn't even know Walmart was insisting that they stay. And so my question is. Where is our procedure? I know we have the food truck ordinance, but where is our procedure? When there's a disagreement whether they have a right to be, whether they are private property, not necessarily a right, let me not say that. But they have permission to be uh on private property, the establishment is known, the. People, the private owner says, no, they're here, we asked them to come here. Where is our protocol? Where is our procedure?
So in the food truck ordinance, which was adopted, um they are required to come in and complete the paperwork for food trucks. They're supposed to have a permit, and when they're setting up in the city, even if it's on private property, they come in, they bring a letter. In this case, it would have been a letter from Walmart stating that they are authorized to be on the property for Saturday. Uh but uh shells, they have not completed paperwork to operate the food truck here in the city. And they have not been in, you know, for a permit or anything like that.
I would desperately like to change that, and these are my reasons, because I think we should shift. Especially if they're being invited on the behalf of the private business, we should shift that responsibility to the business. If they're, if a private um owner says, I'm doing it then, and I want this food truck. I think we should shift that burden, so to speak, to the private business. I also think that we need to utilize, uh Mr. Porter City, I'm trying, you can, if you can, let me out after I finish here. Instead of shutting down. Uh things, because there has been some discrepancies, and I know people don't keep up with the. Or listening policy, and people don't complain like we had today until it started getting a little different, or what have you. But. Where it looks like a fine, without showing up to court instead of a complete shutdown. Because, um. I think we can get our money one way or another, and part of the thing was, the officers, from what I heard from several accounts. They bought food from the place, and then there was like, you gotta go. Well, if they was in era, uh before they bought the food, then our officer can't really. Encourage it by participating in the sale and then coming and then shutting it down. I have a big problem with that.
Well, that's a personnel issue, and that's the first time I've heard of that. I'll definitely address that and find out if that's the case.
Yeah, they were unaware, and I I I included in the uh information that was sent. At the time, when they were getting their food, they were unaware of what was going on, and then once they were made aware, they were already there. And that's when, you know, they they told them they had to to close down, but they were unaware at the time, because normally. When a vendor is setting up, um and food trucks, when they're setting up. Uh there's a process that they go through, then an email is sent out to codes, to the police department, you know, just. So all would know these other vendors that are authorized to set up, you know, in the city, and it doesn't go down to the level of the officers. Um but if there's someone that is set up around the city and they have not completed the paperwork. And once it's known, then the officers are asked to go and just let them know they need to, uh you know, close operations and come in. And this, and they would have been, you know, come in on Monday, see the clerk, you know, to complete the paperwork. And I think they've reached out before, and they've been made aware of what they need to do in terms of, you know, completing the paperwork. But also, it's just looking at it from a safety standpoint as well, because when they come in to complete the paperwork. Then we make sure they have the information that is required from the health department, and then the liability insurance that is required for Texas City. And I know you asked Mr. Coleman to speak on this, well, he probably.
Right, um. I think, um. And they have to do this each time on one time, because I don't remember when the ordinance is.
For the food truck is when they complete the uh the application one, yeah, just once.
Right.
But, um there's something else that's in place for the permit. Is when they set up, like, like the, I used to peanut vendors. When they set up at different places, they come in and say, well, we're just setting up on Friday and Saturday. And they bring in a letter from the property owner and they pay the thirty dollars, you know, for each time they're setting up. But for the food truck permit, they're allowed to set up uh throughout the city uh for the year, I forgot the fee for that. It's the, okay, that's right, because we did change it, because before it was a hundred dollars, that's right, and then we changed the entire ordinance, that's right.
Yeah, I think we need to take a look at that. I don't think, it's burdensome to have to come in every time. Um. If 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 you're a food trucker, I understand the safety side of the the regulation, I do think there's ways. We can make make that periodic, even more so each every time, but it is burdensome to come in. I'm I understand a hundred dollars is too small, or what have you, um. I would argue that thirty dollars is too much each time, it just depends, some people say, well, that can be one plate. Or what have you, depending on what you sell, so that's subjective, I don't know their particular. Um pricing or what have you, um and I I can only rest on a first shot period, I don't know how you can mark it up. Uh to get, fifty dollars, little bit more ticket, but, um. I think. And maybe, uh well, I think. I struggle with. I know we have. Jurisdiction as the city with private ownership still, um. However, I do think, I I need to think, I'm gonna talk with the food truck people a little bit more. And come up with something where I think we ease in the burden that's feasible and 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 legal for us as well. Um but I do think for it, and and, you know, I get the community concerns, I get the. Facebook people tag me all the time on it, or what have you, and my thing is. While we do have a responsibility as a city to ensure certain things, that doesn't also mean I have to be new to the concerns. Uh when people are raising concerns, and when people are saying this is a hurdle for me. I don't think we should do it ourselves to say, well, this is our way, this is what you're gonna do, because of what it does, it turns people away. And we don't wanna turn people away, um if we can, and sometimes it's just a conversation to get our understanding. Or whatever, understanding on our side, understanding on their side, you know, uh you know, that can be a complete understanding mutuality when you walk in and say, we try. But I do think we need to have, I think we don't talk enough with people, not to, but with people. And crafting the policies that we craft here, and we gotta do a better job of that. Not saying that we shake it out, it's gonna look exactly what they want, because a lot of times they don't understand that we gotta leave the liabilities, or what have you. But I do think there's room for us to get input before we make. Top-down policies that these people have to operate on. I think in a one occasion, Jase, you correct me along that, you know, with the establishment, somebody who already had paid, that had put their application in. That they really might be setting up, Jen said, that they that they could call her, you know, that they call and say, I'll be here, you know, if they came in, if they whoever. And and you know, that would help, that have to come, everybody, especially somebody that face coming from out of town, I think that might help. Uh but I think if we, when we go back and revisit, if we go back and revisit, um that might be another situation we could look at somehow. Uh you know, to email them or whatever, to make sure there's still covers on that side of it. I think the only thing.
On that side of it, I think the only thing that I would say when we talk about that they can put a burden on the business. Then to make sure that's gonna be an added group, we'll say, because when we initially got into this. We were getting phone calls from the business owner that was complaining, that that case, Shells was barking up their property without their permission. So I think that we're gonna put it on the business owners, and we can make sure they're sure of it as well, too. Because that, that, that's what I think started us originally when we got into it, because it kept, just kept popping up. You know, without anybody knowing it, I think that person complained, why were they on my property without my permission? So, if we switch it over to the property owner, I think the liability might still need to go with both of them, so that we still have a full understanding. So you can't have me on your property without you following, and I won't be there without following the process.
Well, liability will still fall on the property. Because, just like they have the, like, if people wanna do a permit, they have to get a permit in a certain time, then, as well, it's kinda like a permit in a day. And they were doing it for the children, children's miracle network, I believe. And so, if Walmart were forced in this case to do the permit, and say, we're gonna have this food truck. And it would have covered them, because they still on their property, I believe the liability. Because, uh, it's, I think, Shells wanted to be there without Walmart asking them to be there. So with the fact that Walmart asked them to be there, liability falls with Walmart, and not necessarily just on Shells as well, I'm not arguing. Other, Shells need their liability insurance and everything that they need. But I'm saying, because this particular situation, they were asked by Walmart. And so, when we have situations, we have to evolve and understand that particular situation, because on the, on the phone conversation I had. And it was, it, it was a part not understanding that you still need to go through that on private property. But on the backside, it was also thinking about, okay, at Walmart, if I do there. What responsibility Walmart have, because they know the process, and they have stuff, they, they come across us all the time, they have to get certain things permitted. So, I am saying, so we can not have this big thing between a private owner saying, no. I want this to happen, and they do that. Some responsibility should fall on them as well, and, and, and by way, if they're inviting the food truck or. A vendor, so to speak, then I think, we can also shift the burden in those particular situations. But we have to make policy for that, we can't just, you know, we need to look within that, and, and, and make sure that's in the policy. Because if not, then we're out of compliance, or what have you, so, uh, and that goes for anybody, as the city attorney say. You can't just make policy for one thing, if all of a sudden, um. I don't know if, um, M Market across the road wanna have a thing, I know they have a small parking space. But the same thing for all of them, if they wanna invite food truck do something there, then they will follow the same thing, then the burden shift to them, because it's on their property. They have the, then the stock occupation license, they have the liability insurance hopefully, um, and everything. And so, we can also start shifting some of the burden of that, make it easy. I always thought, when we crafted this food truck policy, it is easier to just identify, especially the city property. And, and private owners to get a list of ones agreed for food trucks. So, on the compliance side, when codes come out, they already know, instead of tracking every time in the list. That these places are designated places for food truck, property owners have agreed, they agree for this list, instead of being. Uh, a food truck having to come in, uh, saying that list will not mostly change, it will just be updated with new food trucks coming in. But the list will pretty much stay the same, the property owners, you say, this is the list, so if I'm a code compliant or an officer, I have my list. And I'm going there, and I, I'm looking, say, for instance, Walmart, Walmart has already agreed that Shells. Uh, Zuzu Subs, for instance, making it up, uh, certain such, has, you know, I want them to be on my property, and they agree. The code compliance said, well, they're on the list, it's Walmart, they're already on the list, everything's good. Or what have you, versus having to figure out and guess and look up things every time. Uh, that's my opinion, that's always been my opinion when it comes to this. But, I wanna make sure, and one of the things I, I get why specifically. Uh, and again, my thing is, I do think it has become some form of ticketed. Thing more than just a prop shutdown, or what have you. Because, see, we can get our money one way or another, uh, from the city perspective. If it's a ticket or citation, they come to court, they pay a fine for violating that, uh, versus. Uh, shut down the people back up a week. Uh, and then hopefully, if we catch them up in it, then we can say, hey, you go and fill out this paperwork, it's what you need to do. But one way or another, we can get our money, that's my opinion on it.
I do know we need to look at that ordinance, I do think, uh, there's a big difference between an event versus retail sales on it. If, uh, if a company asks for a food truck to come, and they're paying the food truck. There's a big difference in somebody in them, that business paying for all the catering and all that, versus somebody sitting there. The food truck setting up and selling everything for retail sale. Um, I don't necessarily think that a catered event falls under the food truck ordinance, because we're not. Because you can hire any caterers, there's several businesses in town that do cater, that cater an event. They just don't cater it out, food truck, but the food trucks are more, getting to be more popular for catered events. So, the catering part does need to be looked at.
But you're gonna have to also look at the overflow, the overflow when you start catering, even outside. The overflow that goes out to the streets and on the sidewalk, and that's when safety comes. And at that part, so we definitely have to be with that outside.
So you're saying, just say, okay, so the Lions Club, and the Kiwanis Club, and everybody meet, every week. And it's catered, all the meals for all.
Are they overflowing to the street?
Not overflowing to the street.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
And you're.
I'm talking about, if you add, just like at Walmart, Shells was there. Shells had not registered first with the city of Corbey. Okay, I have talked with the owner several times, if I come in, do this paperwork. Okay, the Walmart, they're there, whole lot of people there in parking lot. Overflowing, traffic is coming through.
But that city property, I mean, that's private property. That, where Shells was set up, it would have been on private property in their parking lot, it wasn't blocking the city street. It wasn't blocking six.
Right, but you're still looking at the safety of somebody getting hurt in that parking lot.
And I think, back to that, I think, that's why I mean, if you kind of disperating. So when they have to go permanent, like, they say, if we have an event, we need this closed off this. The police chief can look at it, and they can say, this seem like the right safety, so that's what I'm saying. That, yes, so, but that's what I'm saying, if a private, because. Our job is to balance the interest and concerns of different parties, without looking like we're just not being. Uh, I don't even know the word, um, or what have you. Friendly, or, or, or accommodating, right, or what have you, and our job is to balance all of that, and I think. One of the best ways, and maybe not the only way, but what I can think of in this moment, um, and I'm sorry for sweet declarations of. Sweet schedule, but, uh, is, uh, what Commissioner Rain is saying, what you're saying. The point I made, Commissioner Owens, what I think we're all trying to make, is how do we handle the best given all the concerns? Because you're looking at it from a certain angle, I'm looking at it from a certain angle. Commissioner Rainy and the police chief, we're bringing all, in the food truck people, all those angles together. And seeing, how do we make this a better seamless process? Where it's not overburdening on any party, and we can all work together, and what I'm thinking. And we can do that during, like, if Walmart knew they had this event, they knew, because they have a plan in there. So, if they wanna have a disenprimating, saying, this is all we're gonna do. Then they would have went through our process, the police chief would have had opportunity to look at it. We could have said, hey, these are concerns, address these concerns, if we can't afford a commission, we got the food truck. So I think, like Commissioner Rainy says, point, it's a little different. When they are saying, we want this, and we're paying for it, versus, they're just setting up shop somewhere, and for retail sales itself. And so, the question becomes, how do we pull all them angles together? And make a better policy than what we have, because right now, we have a top-down policy. Which is like, we, we almost consider everything the same, but this is technically not the same, as Commissioner Rainy was saying. It's just someone setting up and they're selling for themselves. It, it's not in the same ballpark, it's still a food truck. But the circumstances was a little different. And we need to be able to count, accommodate those differences, I don't know how, that's where.
But if, like you said, if they had submitted something, we would have known, because, I mean, from what you're stating. It seems if Walmart wanted them there as part of the Children's Miracle Network, and I don't know if they were getting, you know, proceeds from there. To support that nonprofit, but we didn't know. And, and then also regarding the catering, um, that's a little different, too, because when you go look at Lions Club, Kiwanis, Rotary. All of those, they're using ca- uh, companies that have a business license, like Carter's and BJ's. So, they already have a business license, so they don't have to come in and do anything different, because they're serving. You know, on the inside and have a business license. With Shells, you know, they don't have anything, you know, on file, a license, permit, nothing.
Well, the one that I, that comes to mind, is like Walmart and Ricky Smith. Ricky Smith was having, nobody was, those food, that food wasn't being sold. He was pri- it was a private event on his own property. With, but it was a food truck coming from out of town. So my question is, if we're gonna sit here and restrict to a food truck, having to have. A million dollars liability on the automotive and a million dollars. I mean, are we gonna make every catering have to have this co- this insurance coverage and stuff? I mean, that catering is, the catering is a little.
But, you know, again, with the catering though, uh, in my mind, what you're saying, like the Lions Club and all of those. They already have a business license.
I'm just saying, food trucks is now a popular catering mechanism, just like the private business. Is a problem, probably, it's a popular catering.
I, I think what they said to pair them the same, though. Uh, I agree with what they said, because I think what they're saying, they're saying, they can do it, but they need to fill out this paperwork. Like, we're not forbidding them to do it, and, but they, just like the brick and mortar places. Then they, we got to have similar records saying y'all doing this. And because if it's a food truck just pop up, we don't have nothing on record. You can cater, we're not stopping that, but as a city, and our responsibility is to have something on paper saying, this is what you're doing. You got to have your license to do it, that's our responsibility as a city, I agree with that, we, we just, just. Just because they pop up, like, everybody has to apply by that rule, just because they're mobile, that doesn't mean they get to come in and get out. That's no record or anything on paper, I agree with that, I'm just saying now, when we have these circumstances coming outside, where it's a private place that's saying, we want this. How do we shift the burden also to them, because Walmart know where to be, to get a permit, they want to do something outside, or what have you. Shells may not have knew, and they, and I can tell you from what they explained to me, they was thinking, it didn't apply because Walmart had asked them. And so, that was a misunderstanding, they, they kinda got there, okay, we gotta have this paperwork, but they thought it was different, because now. Walmart asked them, and they were doing on behalf of a charitable thing, that they didn't necessarily need, and so that was lack of understanding.
But it would have been handled, it, I mean, it would have covered it.
Right.
Based on what we're saying now, because Janice would have heard Shells, and she would have said, wait, they don't have what they need, and that would have established. It would have been taken care of by the event, and that would have been, that side of it.
So they never provided the insurance that is required for the food truck here in town?
Si- Senator Charlie, I do have a question, I think a year or so ago, right around the time we made this ordinance, the state law. Uh, they made a law concerning permitting food trucks, and we never really talked about that. I don't remember where it is, and I forgot to bring it up, but they did actually make a law regarding food trucks.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, and, uh, like, see the attorney, that he'll follow up on it. If I remember correctly, it was exempting them, like, if they had a certificate from the board of health, and one of, uh.
Yes.
City or county, then, if they come here, they could use that same, right, instead of having to get one for Chris, one for words.
That's exactly what it was.
Right.
So, and, and, and maybe that, yo, we got to educate, people, many people don't know our policy. And it's a purpose on us, like, some don't do mean harm, but we try and don't mean harm. And it's a bit policy knowledge gap, and what I don't want to happen is, because they're not knowing. Then it seems like we're mean or nasty, it's just like, no, you don't know this, let us help you understand this. But, you know, a lot of people just trying to make a living, one way or another, make a life. But they also have to be complying on the other side, this is what you must do. Um, and the differences that I have, I have to be certified, do what I do. You know, uh, you know, uh, I can't show up and just train people, and then, you know, like, oh, well, because I have to carry a lot of liability insurance. Or what have you, that I have to pay, I understand that one hundred. But part of what I want to become a stronger talent, uh, to people and entrepreneurs, is for us to. Uh, have to understand that, maybe I say, we're like, listen, go get this from the state, or you can take it anywhere. And then you can come, unless you still gotta fill out all paperwork, because you're coming here, uh, or what have you, but also. Uh, I think it's a long conversation, I go and do my research, I give the city attorney, and then hopefully, we'll come back together, I want to delay the time. Uh, and, and, and try to come up with something that accomplishes every angle that each one of us have, or whatever. Because as a elected official, or I won't speak for everybody, my job is, you know. The people are all bosses. We all have different bosses out there, but the people are all bosses. And if they're constantly not being satisfied, then they're looking at us cross-eyed. And so, and for us to sit up here and act like we don't bring any concerns, then we're not listening to our all bosses, and we gotta listen to our bosses, at least. They're still my bosses until the end of this year, December thirty-first, I don't know if, you know, uh, I wanna continue to be my bosses. But, um, I'm a brain that concerns, just like anybody with brain. I try to alleviate problems that they have, you know, when, when their supervisor or bosses say anything. And so, that's a, that's my only goal here, is to bring forth what my bosses are telling me, that they have a problem with, uh, and that's it. Uh, but I do think, maybe we need a long conversation, to be able to look at all our concerns and bring these angles together, and try to. Craft a, a policy, and, 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 of course, you know, it still won't fit the bill for everything, it's gonna be evolving. You know, this food truck today, we don't know where to be tomorrow, so, yeah. And that's my concern, but I'll, I'll shut up. Any other?
Oh, no, no, no problem. Um, I have a perspective from, from a, obviously, an enforcement side on that, but I mean, again, that would go towards a conversation, so. I would, I would ask that, you know, I would be able to voice.
Yes, sir.
Awesome, all right, um, I'll move on to animal control, again, same reporting period, dog and cat intakes, one hundred and forty-five. City intakes were eighty, Chris County intakes twenty-five, other entities forty. Uh, calls received fifty-nine, adoptions, uh, forty-five adoptions, three rescues, and four owner reclaims. Currently at the shelter, I'm just gonna skip past that, again, that, that's kinda, it's void right now, those numbers change on a daily basis. They're almost a month old. Certations issued at the time was eight, warnings issued were twenty, and there were some slots available at the shelter, at the time, there still is right now, currently. As far as goals and accomplishments, uh, get more animals rescued, they're doing a fantastic job, our, our shelter is doing a really good job on that. Sixty-five animals adopted, rescued, or reclaimed in the month of April, that's outstanding numbers. Uh, Facebook, their, their Facebook page, I don't know if you've been to it, it's, it's really of the traction. Um, you know, I want our police page to be that good, and our codes page to be that good, which would be nice. But, um, no, they do a great job with that, uh, work towards implementing volunteer programs, we're still working towards that, working on schedules, obviously paperwork. We have a lot of people that are interested, something we've never done, um, but I think it would be a, a, a good thing. To allow some people to do volunteer work on there, so we're still working on that. Uh, shelter improvements, there are some improvements that need to be made, and, uh, we've already ordered, uh, grates. That'll help with parvo outbreaks and cleanliness of the shelter, uh, as well as kennel repairs, we've also worked that into our budget, too. Um, didn't ask for more money, we've worked it within what we already currently have, so thankfully, we've been able to do that, or we will be doing that this month. Uh, promoting better animal welfare, um, a- as you may know, we. Uh, promoting better animal welfare, um, a- as you may know, we do loan out dog houses for temporary purposes. We have a tracking system that works very well on that. All those dog houses have been returned, and actually three additional ones have been donated, so we're able to provide that service, and it's been working very well. Um, you know, we're trying not to be heavy handed on things, trying to help people as best we can, uh, when it comes to housing those dogs and things like that. Hosting events, uh, they've been helping out, uh, people decrease the numbers of, um, unsterilized animals, so they're getting that out there. Microchipping, uh, animals as far as lost animals has been a very big hit. We've actually had to order more microchips, which that's a good sign, uh, that people do wanna get on board and, uh, have their animals microchipped. Donations, again, I I I just would be amiss to not say that that we appreciate all our donations. We receive a lot of donations at this time. Uh, we have a a shed that full of just donations and stuff like that, so generous donations, we appreciate it, and it helps us do what we do. Thank you.
I went out there, um, last week.
Did you see the building?
I did. It's so lovely, the young lady, uh, was clean. I was like, well, can I also, but she's like, don't worry about it. Just such a friendly place, uh, like I said, full of donations and, um.
New paint job, saw that?
Paint job, it was very welcome, and I loved it, like, you know, the experience, just getting in the front door, dropping off my defense. Just experienced it maybe two years. It was really great, so. I know too much. I don't wanna, Monica just talking about the black.
I appreciate you saying that, though. It means a lot, because we really worked hard on on making it more welcoming.
It shows. Thank you.
All right.
Next is public works.
All right, beginning with our cemeteries and parks department, routine grass maintenance is ongoing. Next, we have our gas department, annual valve maintenance is in progress. Public awareness messaging for the affected public customer and noncustomer is being prepared. It is scheduled to be mailed out in June, July. Next, we have our street department, pipe replacement on Ninth Avenue and Wall Street is completed. And we have our water department, uh, phase one of the ARPA project. The project is seventy five percent complete. Pipe bursting and grouting are in progress. And our Gulf Deal sales total from May is ten dollars. Any que- any question? Okay, next, we have our, um, goals and accomplishments. We have one update at this time, and it's phase two of the ARPA project. You all approved the recommendation to award phase two of the ARPA project to Inliner Solutions at the last commission meeting. The contract has been submitted to the city manager to be reviewed by the city attorney. That's it, that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, not questions, but, uh, Ninth, is it Ninth Avenue and Wall?
Yes, ma'am.
That, uh, sinkhole is being replaced.
Yes, ma'am. They put in the pipe yesterday, and today they're working on utility cut.
I'd just like to thank you for graciously hosting us, uh, the other week, I don't even remember.
Yes, I do remember.
But I thank you for, um, brushing, hosting us and holding down public works in this time of transition. And, um, that's not in that place, but we appreciate you, and I really, you know, uh, do appreciate you for standing with me, yeah, so is me. Uh, between the city manager and the rest, so we don't work it out, and, you know, create, hopefully, wins for everybody who wants to win. And the people who don't want to win, well, you know, gotta take care of itself, but I appreciate you. And if I don't get a chance to say it, I just wanna say it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. All right, social media and marketing, Mr. Smarter, uh, slightly still morning?
It's slightly still morning, good morning. I'll be chairman, members of the city commission, I'll, I'll be brief and just try to include, uh, everything that I need to say. Uh, from both of my reports, but by way of update, uh, we had an opportunity to see at the May second meeting. The, uh, website, I hope that you are pleased with that. That website is continuing to grow. We have, uh, completed all of our training, basic bill, uh, basic building and editing administration and beyond the basics. Uh, we have been able to identify something that the city manager had asked about in the very own set. Of the, uh, website, and that is a, uh, employee portal. As I was going through all the trainings and working my way through each one, uh, very, uh, uh. It it just took a lot of time to work through each one. I was in a, I able to identify a place. Uh, that I felt that the employee portal would work. Uh, the previous project manager for Granicus had indicated that if we wanted to do that, it was gonna cost us more money. That it would be a separate site, that it would be tied into our CMS. But, um, being able to locate this particular place that is password protected called website user accounts. I questioned our new, uh, project manager, Mary Carmen Vargas, and asked her would that work? She went back to technical support, came back to me, and she said, yes, it will work. And then she began to work out a way and work out the portal for us. It is located on the front page of the site currently under about us, but we can move it wherever we want to. But just to let this commission know that that will work, and so the commission, the, uh, website is coming together. Uh, we would, I would venture to say fifty to sixty five percent complete in, uh, the building. We're updating everything, and it continues to come along well. I do have a, uh, meeting each week. With our, uh, new project manager, we have a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock. And we'll be working through some more aspects of the employee portal. But anybody who is on the committee, uh, would like to be a part of those meetings, let me know. And these are basically question and answer sessions. If you have any kind of concerns, nothing is off limits, nothing is off base. So let me know that you would like to be a part of that. Most of the time, uh, they're on Thursdays, but since we're closed this week, uh, on Thursday. It will be on Wednesday, but anybody that'd like to be a part of that, let me know. I'll make sure that you have the, uh, the, uh. Uh, link to be able to, uh, get into that. One other thing, commissioners and, uh, honorable city manager, I I mean, honorable, uh, chairman, I'd like for you to know city manager as well. Um, with Bobby's help, we, you know that we finally got, uh, the keys to the old city website. With Bobby's help, we worked it out, how to be able to get into that thing and edit it. You may know that, uh, that site had not had any care nor concern for a long time. It was very out of date. If you will go and look at cityofcordial.com, you will see that it has been updated. We are continuing to update it. We are looking at different departments. Some of the departments that have updated in the new site, I've just sort of been going over there and stealing their stuff and dropping it in to the old site. Now, I do understand that, uh, once the new site goes hot and goes live, that the old site goes away. So please understand that I'm not putting a lot of emphasis on it, but it is important, commissioners, that, uh, uh, our citizens. And those who take a look at us have something updated to be able to see and, uh, look at and refer to. And so we are working through that process as well. And, uh, with that, uh, honorable chairman, commissioner, city manager, that is my report. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll try to try and answer them for you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions, comments, just like you'll hear it for this past weekend as well, the coverage that you gave of the June sixth festival. And the raise that was upgraded, and gave us a very realistic look of that compensation that's had, in fact, the folks were going down.
Well, I had some good help there, so. I had some good help, and I, and I will say, honorable chairman, commissioner, city manager, that, uh, there is going to be some more that'll be published on that, uh, probably. Uh, at least by Thursday morning. I've got some more con- I've got some more content that I wanna pull together on that, so we'll be getting that scheduled up as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, honorable chair.
Good morning, everybody, or evening, whatever it is. Um, in, just to save time, I'm just gonna run through some things real quick. Uh, the nu- numbers for May, we pumped fifty two million gallons of water out of the ground, and the wastewater plant treated fifty nine million. That's about as close as they've been together in, I can't even remember when. So, maybe some of the pipe bursting and the CIPP is starting to show, and I'm thrilled. Um, yes, and the old website's very important, because the water quality report for twenty twenty four is on it, as required by EPD. Took me three times, and Rick, I don't know how many times, but he, they've got it on there for me, and I really appreciate it. Um, we still have no internet. This is going on something like month three, I thought had it. But anyway, the best news in the world is they cranked up our generator at the wastewater plant Friday and did a four hour load bank test on it, and it passed. Transfer switch is in, everything's in, we're just waiting to get it all together and cut the power off and have it all come up. So, that's, that's awesome, since hurricane season started the first.
That's right, that's right.
So hopefully we will be prepared. And other than that, I have nothing else, unless y'all have some questions. A hundred thousand?
And so, um, and that there, the thing where they were getting infrastructure needed, they were willing to pay.
Right, that's what I was told. And it's gonna be right there, almost behind the old Zimmer Van building, which is now a cotton warehouse. And the high pressure main runs right by there. The sewer line is not far from there. And there's also CIPP in that sewer line in this next phase of the ARPA project, so that's gonna be a plus.
But they want us, they want to pay for the infrastructure and pay a higher price, but not come into the city lines?
I don't know about, and it's an in, I.
I think at some point in time, those, uh, talks will be held about that, but from my understanding. The, the, the county want to rezonate first, because it probably has not been purchased yet. They just want to go ahead and handle the rezoning.
And I think for, based on what I read in the, in the, you know, the article, was that basically they had to rezone. Because whether it was, the area was, we currently zoned it, it's per state law can be picked there if they get a rezone. But also, I mentioned, I don't think, because I think a lot of residents are really happy right now. I think some PR need to be, uh. So, I, I don't think, uh, uh.
Maybe you can look at it like, you know, if they stay in the county, they're gonna pay more for the water and sewer, one and a half times, so. You know. It's, it's win-win, I think.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thank you for that, all right. Bert, how you doing?
Morning, sir.
You're catching it right there.
Do I have to hand it noon?
Yeah, no, sir. You never know which gonna take up the topic of the day, so.
Well, I wanted to thank you for your continued support with modernizing your technology, and I said, there's two things that are really important right now. And I'm gonna cover one in, in a good bit of detail, if, if that's okay with you. And that's the Windows workstation, Windows eleven workstation upgrades. So I've previously advised you about Microsoft officially ending their support of Windows ten in October. And we've been working on that. Currently, Cordial operates ninety three user stations, laptops and desktops. Fifty nine percent of those are capable of being upgraded to Windows eleven, which is good. Forty one percent are not capable and will need to be replaced with devices that are capable of operating on Windows eleven. So what that means is, um, you know, we've been working hard. We've been spending hours doing as many upgrades as we can. Bobby and I have been able to do, uh, upgrade workstations thirty nine. Which is seventy one percent of those that are capable, and so we're moving down the road. Uh, but what that means also is that fifty four percent of the workstations remain on Windows ten at this time. And we'll continue to work on that. You know, we're in PD now, it's four to five hours per device it's taking us to upgrade. Uh, but we'll just continue plugging away. Uh, and what we're thinking is that the mitigation strategy we have is a good one, because we'll, we should without issue. Complete all the capable upgrades way before that date. And and the downside is that there's thirty eight incompatible devices, which is a strategy to. In the budget process to take care of, uh, you know, so, you know, that's just the situation on that. Um, the other thing, which is really kind of exciting right now, is, um, the voice over IP phone system. Which, if you looked around today, when you came in, there's actually devices laid out at workstations. And those were put out yesterday and configured, and Bobby went and configured their own virtual LAN for those devices on the IP. On the network, which is great. Um, those will begin to be deployed and turned up today. Phone numbers were preconfigured and added to those devices. There, there's very simple instructions for the end users to utilize, to configure their devices for their own personal operations. However, Bobby and the team will be at each department, working with the devices, working with the end users. To ensure a smooth transition, and that's where we are.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes all the part six reports and goals. Thank you all for giving your report, uh, with our abbreviated meeting, uh, last time. So thank you all for catching us up and, uh, providing the reports and the goals and accomplishments. All right, uh, with that, we'll go to all specific agenda items. Uh, agenda item number one, considering through the second reading of our order, provide for the use of community clubhouse. Do we have a motion in the second for agenda item number one?
I'm moved.
Second, it's been properly moved, exactly second that we consider including second reading of the ordinance. All right, any discussion? All right, saying now, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
All right, uh, motion carried, is approved. All right, agenda item number two, first reading of our order, declaring portion of the municipal street system as unnecessary. Do we have a motion in the second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we just, uh, uh, have a first reading of this ordinance. All right, uh, any discussion?
Can Mr. Chairman, for those who, um, uh, are viewing or do not have the information. This is the alley that is near, uh, Gillespie Gardens apartment, and you all have a photo, uh, in your package. It's showing, you know, we're proposing to, uh, close the alley at the end of their driveway to, uh. Cut down on the, the drive through traffic in that area.
And I, yes, ma'am. And I think we, we, we talked about it, uh, um. Everything with compliance with, I think, uh, fire and police are in and out, right? With the alley closure, I think we talked about last meeting.
Yeah, 'cause it's not the complete, it's just right there, that section, but yes, they still have access to it, as well as public works.
Any other special? Saying now, shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, is approved. All right, agenda item number three, considered approved, the Tranqor Tranqor. All right, motion carried, is approved. All right, agenda item number three, considered approved, the Tango Tango Agreement for the Fire Department. Do we have a motion in the second?
I move.
Second.
There's no problem with moving second that we consider in the full disagreement. All right, any discussion? Saying now, shall proceed to vote. Uh, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
All right, it is approved, motion carried. All right. Agenda item number four, considering approved, the M, uh, MOA, number one agreement between Cordial Fire and Drug Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency. All right, do we have a motion in the second for agenda item number four?
I move. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we consider approved, uh, the number one agreement. All right, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, City Commissioners, again, this is the, um, the, um. Grant funds that, uh, State Representative Williams, uh, submitted to the Appropriations Committee, uh, for the Fire Department. And so it was approved and this is the agreement, uh, which would be, be between the, uh, Fire Department and the Homeland, Jima Homeland Security Agency. And thanks again to Representative Williams.
Any other discussion? All right, saying now, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
All right, it is approved, motion, uh, motion carried. Uh, agenda item number five, considered approved, agreement between the City of Cordial and Anno Solutions. All right, do we have a motion in the second for agenda item number five?
Second.
There's no problem with moving seconded, we consider approved, disagreement. All right, open for discussion.
This is fourth phase two of the ARPA project.
Saying now, shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, it is approved. All right, with that, everybody, so I'll see the managers before.
Yep, afternoon, good afternoon. Again, I heard you all this morning. City Managers' Report for June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. I'll start with a recap of some of, uh, the community events. Uh, the most recent being the, um, Juneteenth Parade and Community Event. Um, we have just a few pictures that, uh. From the event and again, uh, the parade is on the current website, a video of the parade and. And so again, we receive good positive feedback regarding this event. And, uh, Commissioner Owens, is there anything you would like to add?
Uh, just want to say, I think it's a great event. I want to thank the Police Department and all the city employees that, uh. Played a very vital role in making sure they could have a fine, that raised up in the Sheriff's Department. And I think, um, overall, all those that were there enjoyed, it was a good festival, from the food, um, from the food. I, I think it was really good and it shows, it showed that we can, the parade itself was really, um, really wonderful. And gave us, uh, opportunity to, uh, many people didn't know that, um, the, um, Grandma Shipp water parade, uh, slated to be, uh, Mr. A.J. Rivers. And he passed prior to the, uh, parade, but his, his wife, uh, his spirit and daughters, uh, came in and they said that, uh, her grandma Shipp is what they did. And this Rivers is very happy to be a part of it. She commented, uh, about the whole event as well, so we thank, uh, City of Cordial for our very first team parade.
Right, good. For those who weren't able to attend, just watching the parade, um, being, you know, having the opportunity to watch was really good.
I, I, I would like to say something, sorry, I couldn't do that, traveling, of course, you know that. Um, it looks great, I plan on being to others. Um, I will say, this community know who I am, it's no destination for this. Juneteenth is a, a national holiday and, uh, you know, uh, long sufficiency struggle to get the holiday. As a lady walked in March, a really long way to get this is a national holiday. But Juneteenth is not. Uh, uh, just a black holiday. Juneteenth is a celebration that. Starts to begin to celebrate real freedom. As word travel that slavery was indeed over. And with continuing pressing meaning on, um, at a moment in time where I'm trying to figure out whether, you know. What I'm going to do about this coming election season. But one of the things I want to make clear to say, I don't want to be right when I talk about racism. I don't want to be right. You know, we had an interesting conversation earlier today. But when we have a celebration of holidays that seem to be black, we need more white people and others to show, and let me just put it as one as possible. Because what I often see, and people tell me how wrong and divisive I am. What I often see when there's something on the west side, there's this holiday such as MLK Day, then there, we're missing the diversity. And so you can't tell me I'm wrong when the evidence and facts are shown. And I'm saying this to the community. If you want this chairman to be wrong, start showing up and to celebrate all American holidays. And not just the ones that seem to be certain people want to celebrate. I want to be wrong. I got about six months left in the term. Make me wrong. Make me wrong. And start actually showing up embracing all these other events that happen on the other side of Cordial. Because when we have Fourth of July, we have the certain other parades, it's diversity, uh, what happened. Um, I see people of all skin color. And so what I encourage this community to do, other than make me wrong, is truly come together. Truly come together in these events. And I know y'all know me, I say what should be said, right, or what happens. And I'm okay with that. Um, but someone has to be transparent, someone has to be honest. There's really no killing without honesty coming from counsel. If I have a client or family in front of me and they're not opening up, we're not gonna get far. And so in a community way, we're not gonna get far, we don't have these real intentional conversations. But MLK Day came and I didn't say anything. But I'm saying something now. And on this open invitation. To make the chairman wrong about everything he has said about racism, about white supremacy. It's an open invitation. Cause that's what coming together is. That's what coming together is. But that's what I'll say, not to down for, thank you, Commissioner Owens, and for everything, the end of ACP and everybody else. Do for events like this, but I truly ask the community, as the, as the chairman and the last chairman, um, as our government will change. Is to actually come together in a real way and not lip service and making someone a boogeyman or a villain. Because if I don't run for reelection, and if I'm not elected, if I do run, these problems are not gonna go away without talking about it. And pushing them under the rug. He's gonna take real action. And part of that is showing up and really having that, that community connection that we pretend that we have. Uh, and so that's my piece on that. Uh, prove me wrong. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, thank you. Um, the next event, the Ministers Meeting was held last Thursday. Jared McCarthy, who is the Executive Director for Southwest Georgia United, uh, was the speaker for that event and it was well-attended. Next, we have the upcoming meetings and events. Uh, as previously mentioned, the Historic Preservation Commission will meet tomorrow. Six P M, right here in the courtroom. I think there are three, uh, items on the agenda in terms of, uh, requests. Um, Propel Meeting, uh, is Thursday, June twenty-sixth at the Dowdy Building, eleven twenty-nine Fifth Street North at eight thirty A M. Followed by the, uh, Chris County Community Council Collaborative Meeting. Monica was just here, uh, and made a presentation. So, uh, that meeting will, uh, follow the Propel Meeting at nine thirty A M. On Thursday, June twenty-sixth, that's a busy day. We have the Border Zoning Appeals Meeting for the Orchard. And again, we invite all to come out, uh, and hear the, uh, you know, the presentation from the developer. And that meeting will be held at ten A M here in the courtroom. And then the Watermelon Road Race, this is something that. Pre, that occurred previously with during Watermelon Days and so now it's back. Uh, that event will be held Saturday, June twenty-first, five K at eight A M. And those who just wanna walk and have fun, the one-mile run starts at eight fifteen. All events are at Destiny Fitness and the sponsor is Destiny Fitness. Additional upcoming events, please save the date for the dedication ceremony for I seventy-five interchange at exit one oh one in memory of Johnny Ford. And it will be held in the open, uh, area that Fairfield Inn and Suites, and that will be held on June twenty-seventh at ten A M. The Watermelon Parade will be held on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, eight thirty A M. The parade will begin at fifteenth, uh, well. The, uh, parade is from fifteenth Avenue, uh, down to Sixth Street, uh. And the lineup begins at seven thirty A M at South Gate Shopping Center. And on the current website, we do have that logo on the website and you can click on that logo and it will display the brochure. That includes all events for the Watermelon Festival days. If you still wanna party with Thomas the Train, you have one last weekend, which is this upcoming weekend. Uh, and you can contact Sam Shortline regarding that, uh, information. And then as Monica stated earlier in her presentation, the Back to School Rally is on August second. Many people are unaware that today is an election day. It's the Public Service Commissioners' primary special election. Uh, you were voting your assigned precincts today from seven A M to seven P M. A lot of people wanna know, uh, want to know and some don't know about the Public Service Commission. The Public Service Commission ensures that consumers receive safe, reliable and reasonably priced telecommunications. Electric and natural gas services. The five members of the commission are determined by statewide elections. So here in Cordial, yes, you can go and vote for a Public Service Commission. There is a ballot, Republican ballot and Democrat ballot. And, uh, you can contact the Elections Superintendent, uh, for that information. But, um, again, today's election day, early voting was held for the past two weeks. So I want to make sure we are aware of that. I would like to thank the, uh, City Commission for, um, agreeing to allow the ladder truck to assist with the fire. That was in Dooley County at the, um, what was the, the Christian church, uh, Christian school? Um, and because of that, uh, you know, they really needed assistance from us with the ladder truck. So, uh, it's, that, that ladder truck has definitely been a great investment for the city, the county. And nearby surrounding communities. And I just thank this commission as well as the Fire Department and the Fire Employees. For what you all are doing, uh, here in the community. As stated earlier, all the is, um, I think the expected. Open date is September, October timeframe. I know, uh, I get asked that question a lot and, a lot often. And so we want to make sure that information is available. Uh, the City Clerk had her first N C J audit regarding alcohol licenses. And I will, uh, give her the opportunity to update you all on that in terms of what was required and, and how it went.
Chairman, please, yeah. Okay, we did pass. Very first one, we passed, being prudent for alcohol. And, uh, it was Kim Miller. She's a non-compromised justice specialist of the Georgia Bureau of Investigation. And I have completed the training, uh, for this audit with the Georgia Crime Institute Center. And I have received two certificates on February sixth, and they are non-compromised justice training, uh, criminal justice information system, security policy awareness. And the purpose of, uh, this certification is to ensure that I understand how to properly use G C I C, N C I C. Systems handling sensitive data and comply with all relevant laws and regulations. And I did that, uh, I passed them and everything with all the required, uh, laws and everything was in place. And, uh, she did a random check of four of the files, alcohol files, and they were all good. And let me just give you all an update on my certification. I know I didn't, you didn't say that.
Go ahead.
On my, uh, City Clerk certification, I have one class, I was trying to get to the last two here, Government one oh one, so. And the day that we had the audit is when it was offered virtually and I couldn't take it. So it's offered again, it's about, it's September. So thankfully, I would give it at that time and my certification.
All right. Thank you. I know sometimes, you know, people wonder about, you know, all that we do in terms of the alcohol license, but there is. A reason is because, you know, of audits and things like that, so, uh, thanks for that. Um, one item that I would like to mention to you, the L M I G map, I recently sent that after the last meeting. Commissioner Rain reminded us about a map that was sent out, but it has also been updated because I think it was sent in twenty-twenty-three. And so Marcia has updated that map and, um, we have that information for you and I appreciate, uh, Marcia updating the map. In terms of action items, I have two, a budget amendment and an R H C agreement. But before I go into those, just a couple of other updates and information. Again, we will be closed on Thursday, June nineteenth, in observance of Juneteenth. City offices will reopen on Friday, June twentieth. At twenty twenty-five, June twenty, twenty twenty-five at eight A M. And then just the update from a few meetings in May, um, and you have the information in your packet. I, uh, provided an update, um, from the Propel update that was held at Albany State University. I provided that at a previous meeting. And at our previous meeting, we also shared information regarding Indigo Life Business Symposium. On May twenty-first, I had the opportunity to participate in a Community Health Needs Assessment for Chris Regional Hospital. And I think it's very important that we provide information when it is requested regarding, uh, health here in the community and the hospital. As you all know, a lot of, uh, hospitals and rural communities have closed and so we are blessed to have, uh, Chris Regional Hospital here in the community. And then on May twenty-second, uh, we had the opportunity to attend River Valley Regional Commission Legislative Luncheon. And hear updates, uh, from that group that presented. And just a few of those laws that take effect. On July first is Senate Bill two forty-four, which is the Wrongful Conviction Compensation Act. For individuals wrongly convicted and incarcerated, they can recoup their legal fees. Uh, Senate Bill seventeen, Ricky and Alyssa's law requires all of the state's public K through twelve schools. To install mobile panic alert systems that connect directly to local and state emergency services. And it also mandates real-time digital mapping to help first responders locate and respond faster during an emergency. It's named after Ricky, a teacher killed in last year's shooting at Appalachia High School in Wanda, Georgia. And Alyssa, one of seventeen students and staff killed in the twenty-eighteen Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting in Parkland, Florida. Georgia is just the tenth state to implement this measure. And then House Bill two oh eight. Disabled veterans can now apply for two additional license plates. And then, uh, Senate Bill fifty-five, the Di, Di, Dignity and Pay Act prohibits any employer. To pay a person with a disability less than minimum wage. And then House Bill ninety-two is a follow-up to, uh, House Bill five eighty- And then House Bill ninety two is a follow up to uh, House Bill five eighty one regarding um, the homestead exemption. And so we will be um, reviewing that House Bill to make sure that we stay in compliance with what is required. Uh, now that uh, we're beyond House Bill five eighty one. And so those are just some of the uh, some of the information that was shared, not only at the legislative luncheon, but uh, in other arenas. And so now I would like to go back to the budget amendment, the action items. The budget amendment is to amend the budget to add grant funds received for the generators that uh, Debbie is so happy about, at the wastewater treatment plant. And hopefully we have uh, some funds remaining because that was a huge purchase, but hopefully we have some funds remaining where maybe we can purchase another generator. And so the total uh, requested is four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars. And then regarding the R H C agreement, disagreement, um, this body voted and passed the agreement in uh, twenty twenty three, it became effective January first, twenty twenty four. The terms of the agreement states that it automatically renews unless each party gives the other a thirty day notice. However, um, because the dates would change, it's year to year, but the dates would change, so this agreement now has um, twenty twenty five dates in it, but it is something that you all passed before, but I just wanted to make sure that uh, you know, we uh, take action on it so that it continues. And that's all that I have.
Alright, commissioners, you've heard the action items, they only get done by motion in the second for y'all, there we go, so. What do you have?
How long would the budget amendment, the grant bond amendment, uh, fourteen, four, four hundred and fourteen thousand, which one do you have?
Yes, it's been properly moved a second that we uh, give the budget amendment for the, I'm not the city manager, specify to amend it, alright, any discussion? Saying now Shepard receive the vote, Commissioner Shepard. Commissioner Owens, yes, Commissioner Rain.
Yes.
Alright, it is approved.
Thank you, thank you.
It's the second one, it's R H C agreement, alright.
And then it's for the city hall and the library.
It's been properly moved a second that we uh, uh, approve this R H C agreement for the um, city hall and libraries, alright? Any discussion? Saying now Shepard receive the vote, Commissioner Rain.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens, yes, Commissioner Shepard.
Yes.
Alright, the motion carried is approved.
Alright, that's all that I have, thank. About fifteenth Avenue, um, and um, I spoke with uh, the chief, uh, passed the information on to him, and we have ordered um, because we have, um, chief, what's the name of the fund, combination funds? Uh, where we have ordered, because you know, before they used to set out these trailers and, you know, but now they have the actual street signs that you can, and they, but they are still movable where you can, you know, place it there so we can gauge how fast, you know, cars are going, and it can flash and give them a warning uh, driving too fast, you know, over the speed limit, anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I actually have quotes on them, um, one person can set them up, so it's a lot easier, it's a lot more uh, mobile, um, with with the quotes, there's a couple batteries, so there won't be any downtime as far as, you know, once the battery runs out, you can have to recharge it, you can keep swapping. Um, a lot of cities are using them, and hopefully moving forward, I had to put in the email, um, before I went on vacation. Uh, as far as trying to report with it, so we uh, I'm still checking on that.
A sore spot because I have resident that has been complaining about, complaining about it, and unfortunately, her dog was hit. Killed, and I hated that because she had been complaining, I had, we had talked about it, talked about it, yeah, and um, and in the past, she had moved other dead animals that might have hit, but this time it was actually her dog that was scared a couple of weeks ago, so I hated that, and I just hope that we can, and I just really hope that our citizens will take more precautions when they're going to these residential areas. Because you're taking after what that area they use. A lot of people are five sixty, they drive fifty, but they're turning it into a sixty. And, you know, from one corner to another, they're going so fast, and, and I, I just hate that, when she called and told me that, because like, you know, it, it hurts me because she had been talking about it for so long, and we had, and I had, you know, talked about it, talked about it, so I really hope that once they're out there, wherever they're placed at, we're going to take precautions, you know, to, to, I'll take it out there.
Detracing information too, by the way, that's no very good, that's good, that is good. It can give you data to see when the highlights are, how many people are leaving it.
Yeah, because um, we also have uh, car speeding, uh, yesterday, there were two um, chargers on Joe Wright Drive and then on Eighteenth Avenue, and at the speed that they were going, if a child, you know, wandered out there or something like that, and like you said, I paid then, uh, it's really going to be bad, so, uh, again, the good thing about it, those can be moved around the community and uh, captures information.
And I have one other question, uh, one more thing, there, there, we doing a lot of work in our community, different neighborhoods, you have other, um, people are coming to communities that are doing different things, if a truck is in your area and it's not some, it is not City Cordial truck or a truck that you used to call the police department, it just makes them, make them investigate, if you don't find out, those people popping up. There's, there's an incident right now, I've been without internet at my house since last week because um, I came home, we actually called the police department, it's by me that did this. I called the police department to have them come because all the wires um, were pulled away from my house. And um, we were looking at it, and we thought the person may have somebody had a cut or whatever, but as it would be a truck coming through the neighborhood hit the top of, and just completely blew it off, and we might have, so if there's a truck in your area, you're not sure where it's going, just call the police department, because I think I even called you with, um, because it, it's, it's, you know, it's not wrong, that's the protection of your neighborhood. And, you know, the only reason we knew that it was a truck that came through, because one of my neighbors said, I think that's what it was, and it was of course after the fact. But, you know, it, it would have helped to have probably known then, but hopefully I have internet this, I mean, why not this?
I know Debbie feels your pain. Oh, oh, yeah, that's right, uh, and probably, uh, I know I had, and she'd have reached out, reached out to the M C A because I mean, we have the same issue at the animal control shelter, we know the way it was built, uh, they never had internet, but those are definitely two places where we need internet, so, uh, is it, uh, the vendor, uh, are they getting back to you with, um? Oh, that's right, okay. Okay, can you follow up with them on that, that's right, cause I do remember now you, we were working with Chris Power now instead of the other vendor. Okay, yeah, so let's, let's work to get that resolved, so, okay. And if you need me to reach out, just let me know, to, okay, alright. That's all that I have.
Any questions, concerns, city members? Say the term? Five, have nothing.
That's always five.
Alright, uh, we did our executive session for.
We need another executive session. Executive session for uh, personnel and, um, I don't know if, um, how do you want to? Okay, litigation, personnel litigation.
Alright, uh, commissioners, you heard for personnel and litigation is executive session, you have a motion in the second. It's been properly moved. It's been urgently seconded by Commissioner Shepard that we entered another executive session for the reason of personnel litigation. At the time I have is twelve thirty five, uh, I would very like to be known by forceful I. At this time, we're going to executive session, twelve thirty five.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So.
Second.
All those in favor? Is there any motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.